Okay. Can I ask everyone to take their seats if you can? First, we're gonna call to order tonight's meeting of the Township of Bernards zoning board of adjustment. The first item on the agenda is the flex. So please stand if you can. In accordance with the requirement of the open public meeting law, notice of this meeting of the board of adjustment of the township of Bernards was posted on the bulletin board in the reception hall of municipal building Collier Lane, Basking Ridge, New Jersey. It was also mailed to the Bernardsville News Whippany, New Jersey, the Courier News Bridgewater, New Jersey, and it was also filed with township clerk, all on January ninth of this year, and was mailed electronically to all those who had requested individual notice. Following procedure has been adopted by the Bernards Township zoning board of adjustment, there will be no new cases heard after ten o'clock and no new testimony heard after ten thirty tonight. Ms. Slaman, can you give us a roll call, please?
Chairman of the engineer.
Here.
Ms. Herrera.
Here.
Ms. Padici.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Ms. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Pockstar.
Here.
Ms. Silver.
Here.
Ms. Trapp.
Here.
Mr. Sobieski.
Here.
And Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Mr. Schlech.
Here.
On further record, Ms. Slaman is present.
Fantastic. I think we could entertain a motion to excuse the absence of Dr. Agarwal, who did, I believe, contact us and let us know he wasn't gonna be able to make it tonight. Thank you, Ms. Padici.
Second.
Thank you. That was Ms. Padici and Mr. Kraus, first and second. Is that an all in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
I'll have a typo.
Aye.
Stay. Thank you.
Terrific, thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes. They were circulated in advance, they're from the August sixth regular session meeting.
Madam Chair, I have a few typos, but they are only typos. There's nothing material. If we could just agree to approve as amended, I would make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Pockstar.
So it's not as amended with the minor typos?
Minor typos, yes.
All in favor?
I think individual.
Individual on that one for the approval of minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Herrera?
Yes.
Ms. Padici?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Bowman?
Yes.
Ms. Pockstar?
Yes.
Ms. Silver?
Yes.
Ms. Trapp?
Yes.
Chairman of the engineer?
Yes. Thank you. Next is the resolutions for approval. The first one is Miller, which was ZB two five zero one three. Any comments or edits on that resolution or motion to approve as amended?
I think I have one on that, which I, again, it's just add a word, add the word two.
Okay.
I can send it to Mr. Sobieski later.
Okay, great, thank you.
And I would make the motion to approve as amended.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Padici.
Ms. Silver and Ms. Trapp are not eligible to vote for the next resolution. Ms. Herrera?
Yes.
Ms. Padici?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Bowman?
Yes.
Ms. Pockstar?
Yes.
Chairman of the engineer?
Yes.
Thank you. The next resolution was Pockstar, which was ZB two five zero one five. Who's eligible on that one, Ms. Slaman?
Ms. Pockstar and Ms. Trapp are not eligible.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve as drafted unless someone has changes with changes.
Sorry.
And here I was thinking there's only one type.
Motion to approve with changes, we'll be hearing right now.
Just typos, that's it.
Okay.
Nothing material.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Mr. Kraus and Ms. Bowman. Did you second that?
I'll second though.
Thank you.
Ms. Herrera?
Yes.
Ms. Padici?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Bowman?
Yes.
Ms. Silver?
Yes.
Chairman of the engineer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is the Chaudry case. We will not be hearing that case tonight, so if anyone's here to hear that case or ask questions or comments, tonight's not your night. I believe we are carrying that to October eighth with no further notice. Is that correct, Mr. Sobieski?
That's correct, Madam Chair. And if you want, I can make the formal announcement to make official.
Yes, please, yes.
Okay. So the application of Mohammed Chaudry concerning property located in block thirteen oh seven lot six, also known as one seventy seven West Oak Street, under application ZB twenty five just zero one four. That hearing will be carried to the board's October eighth, twenty twenty five meeting. No further notice will be required either by publication or by certified mail or other form of personal service. This announcement constitutes your notice that this hearing is gonna be carried to that date. So we'll see you at seven thirty PM here at the municipal building on October eighth for that hearing.
Great, October eighth, no further notice. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Madden, which is case ZB two five zero one six.
Madam Chair, while their team's approaching, I'll just point out for the record, I did review their notice. I do find same to be sufficient, both in terms of its content and timeliness of service. I think, actually, Mr. Zelli, you were able to get the waivers from the two parties?
Yes and no.
Yes and no, okay. Well, that's, I'll let you explain.
What was that question?
So, first off, they published everything timely, they served notices to everybody, almost everybody, timely. They needed to get waivers from the Liberty Corner Fire Company, which I believe they obtained, and then Somerset County Planning Board. So I think, Mr. Zelli, you might have had it through.
Ms. Slaman followed Ms. Kiefer's excellent example and was able to get the fire chief to sign off, because nobody ever sees that on the first page of the list, and that's why that happened. This is on a county road. We did inadvertently not serve the county planning board. I have spoken with Nora Fekid, who is the senior planner at the county planning board. She will sign a waiver. She said she'd have it to me today. She did not. She did confirm it's an exempt application. She doesn't even want their application submitted. But in any event, I should have it. I will certainly have it to you before we're dealing with the resolution or anything else. So I would ask if we'd be able to go forward this evening. As I said, it's completely exempt, because single families are exempt from county review, basically.
I would say, Madam Chair, as a condition of any approval, if you provide that, it will be okay, but knowing that the applicant would be proceeding at its own risk should the county, for whatever reason,
Correct.
decide to challenge the notice.
Correct, understood.
But we can make that a condition of approval if we don't have. Yes, okay. That sounds like a good plan.
Okay, all right. So I guess you're okay to proceed, Mr. Slaman.
Thank you. For the record, Frederick Zelli Postpolak on behalf of the applicants. This is for Taylor and Louis Madden, eighty-one Stonehouse Road, Basking Ridge, block six oh oh one lot five is the subject address. The subject property is an extremely undersized. It's eight thousand four hundred thirty-six square feet in a one acre zone, located on the northern side of Stonehouse Road, immediately adjacent to the former Millington Quarry property. Property hosts a small one thousand ten square foot, two-story home with a living slash family room, kitchen, full bathroom bedroom on the first floor, and just one bedroom on the partial second floor.
I'm sorry, I missed what you said. Immediately adjacent to what?
The former quarry property.
Yes, okay, quarry, thank you.
Due to the small size and lawfully nonconforming location of existing dwelling, the property is extremely nonconforming as to lot width, fifty-nine point nine six feet, where two hundred is otherwise required. Lot frontage, fifty-nine point nine six, again, where a hundred is normally required. Front yard setback, four point two, where seventy-five is required. Single yard setback, five point six nine, and twenty-two point two two, respectively, where twenty is required. So one of those actually complies. In combined side yards of twenty-five point seven two, where fifty feet is required. It is barely conforming as to lot coverage presently. We have fourteen point seven one percent where fifteen percent is permitted. The applicants wish to expand the existing home by squaring off the northeast rear corner of the first floor of the home to enlarge the existing living family room, and by creating a full second floor to accommodate two additional bedrooms, a full bathroom, and a laundry room. They also wish to construct a rear open deck and a covered front porch. Project will require the following variance relief. Front yard setback of five point five nine, where four point two presently exists and seventy-five is required. Northerly side yard of five point six nine, where two point nine seven exists and twenty's required, so we're actually improving that, although still out of conformance, obviously. Combined side yard setbacks of twenty-seven point nine one feet, where twenty-five point seven two exist and fifty's required. Finally, lot coverage of twenty-two point two six percent, where fourteen point seven one exists and fifteen is permitted. Three witnesses this evening. First, Louis Madden, one of our applicants. Second, Edward.
Can you give us the numbers again, because they don't match Mr. Schley's numbers, so.
Mr. Schley's numbers are based on one thousand nine seventy-seven point five impervious. Is that what we're looking at? And it's actually one eight seven seven point five, so.
Can you just give the numbers again, that you said in terms of maximum lot coverage, your view of the impervious versus your question?
All of them are just coverage, I'm sorry. All of them are just coverage.
Just coverage, yeah.
I have twenty-two point two six requested.
Twenty-two point two six.
One four point seven one existing.
One point seven one existing, okay.
Fifteen permitted.
Okay. What other numbers didn't match? Did they all not match?
I think the other ones are accurate.
I think we're on the same page, otherwise.
Okay, great. Thank you, sorry.
Second witness will be Edward Deck, our engineer. It actually is just two witnesses this evening, so, short and sweet, hopefully.
Okay.
Can I just go back to the lot coverage numbers? I mean, my number in my memo, the twenty-two point one eight, is what I believe to be the coverage under the ordinance. Are you saying that that's incorrect?
I'm saying it's incorrect, because it is based on one thousand nine seventy-seven point five as the coverage, and it's actually one eight seven seven point five. So that throws off all the other numbers.
So what, well, the ordinance has a different way of calculating the coverage in the lot area as compared to the actual existing coverage. There's a note under my zoning compliance table. So the lot area is not eighty-four thirty-six, or eighty, eighty-four thirty-six is eighty-nine sixteen, as far as zoning compliance is concerned, and as far as lot coverage is concerned. So there are two sets of numbers. One is the actual, and one is the for zoning compliance purposes numbers. I just wanna make sure that the for zoning compliance purposes numbers, that we agree on those.
That's, I understand that there's two sets. It doesn't change the fact, I don't think, well, when you're under oath, we can rule that.
I'm just saying, the lot area and the lot coverage, as defined by ordinance, which I think is what the board technically is gonna go by, are the numbers, what I believe are in my report, and they're also on the plan, along with the numbers you cited, as the actual, real-world numbers.
Your lot area is what changes, correct, between the two?
The lot area changes, and by virtue of how lot coverage is defined, the lot coverage changes, because it's based on lot area. So those two numbers are, there's gonna be two sets of numbers.
As to the permitted.
Not as to permitted. Permitted is fifteen percent. The existing and proposed coverage is, there's gonna be two sets of numbers. One, the actual, real-world numbers, which you cited, I believe, and the other, the zoning compliance numbers, what our ordinance, based on our ordinance definitions and the way the ordinance calculates lot area and lot coverage, that set of numbers, which are the numbers represented in my memo.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure that we're not in disagreement on that. Yeah, and it's all.
Yeah, the only, the only, okay.
It's based on the right-of-way, because you're.
Understood, understood. All I'm asking is the, I'm looking at paragraph four of your memo. And elsewhere.
By may, why don't we swear everybody in and.
That's true, they're not sworn in yet either, are they? Ed, would you please stand up, and Lou, you'll also be sworn in.
Okay, so I gotta get these two gentlemen, it's all over, two more professionals, if all four of you can raise your hands. While we swear, or for the testimony you brought, provided, in Mr. Schley's case, the testimony he did provide, is, and will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got it?
I do.
I do.
Great, okay.
Thank you.
So I'm looking at paragraph four of your memo.
Yeah, paragraph four of my memo and all the other comments are based on the zoning compliance numbers. The difference is explained in the footnote, the asterisk, under the zoning chart on page three of my memo, where it states that if there's more than a twenty-five-foot right-of-way measured from the street center line, which there is in this case, it's thirty-three feet about, that the extra amount of right-of-way over that twenty-five feet, so an extra eight feet, is considered lot area.
Right.
Okay, and so, the zoning compliance number, the existing lot area plus the extra eight feet is eighty-nine hundred and sixteen square feet. And your lot coverage, based on that number, is twenty-two point one eight percent.
Right. What I'm saying is, you're basing the twenty-two point one eight percent upon there being one thousand nine seventy-seven physical coverage, correct?
Yeah, including, there is some coverage in the right-of-way, that also counts.
Exactly a hundred square feet?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's how much coverage is on the property, based on the way the ordinance.
And Mr. Deck, you're under oath, we don't include that in the eighteen seventy-seven?
No.
Okay, then we're good.
Okay.
Then we're good.
Thank you, sorry, that took so long.
Yeah, dead out.
So what you're saying, we're good, you mean it's twenty-two point one eight, you're agreeing with Mr. Schley?
Then Mr. Schley's number is right for that, yeah.
Gotcha.
And the lot area, so they don't have much.
Lou, would you please explain all of that? With that, unless there's other questions for me? Oh, no, no, okay. Mr. Madden, wanna come over here and I will hold that for you at the appropriate time.
Okay.
First, would you please tell the board your full name and address?
Louis Madden, I live at twenty-one Columbia Road in Baskin Ridge.
And what do you do for a living, sir?
I am a builder here in town. I do a lot of houses here in town.
Here in town and surrounding towns?
Most of it's in Baskin Ridge. Right now, I've got three going in town.
Did you also do the house next door?
I did not do that one. No, I did the four family on the end of twenty-one Columbia Road. I bought it from Jay Oats, I guess, a few years ago, it was in front of the board.
Many years ago.
Many years.
And when did you purchase the subject property?
Couple months ago, maybe three, four months ago, whenever we were.
You have a set of photographs in front of you?
I don't.
What I'm gonna ask you to do is just one by one, let the board know what that particular photograph is portraying. Do they have all the photographs shortly before we filed the application? And they accurately depict what I saw when I was taking them.
Basically, this is just looking at it from the driveway side, the right side of the house from the street. The second one, same thing, from the street. And then straight on, from the street, and then from the left side, from the street. And this is from the neighbor's house on the left side, looking at the left side of the house.
Maybe just hold that one up, so you can follow this thing.
We're gonna take off the set of stairs that are on the, on the left side of the house. And this one's from the back of the house, looking at the back of the house. That's where I wanna square off the back corner of the house.
So that notch between, say, the main house and what was probably additional, at one point, you're gonna square that?
Just, yeah, make a nice simple square house.
And this is a renovation, not a total?
Correct, it's a renovation, yeah. Again, that's another shot from the back of the house.
And who took these photos?
What's that?
He did, Mr. Zell.
Yeah, he took it.
Recently.
Just before we filed.
And then this one's standing at the driveway, looking at the right side, the last photo.
Was the fence that's up there now, was that added after these pictures were taken?
What's that?
There's a fence, was that, a wooden fence, was that taken after these pictures?
That was taken, that was done afterward, yeah. I applied for a new fence. The guy was selling his house next door, I wanted to make it look a little nicer for him, but he didn't cut his grass since then, so.
No worries, I just saw the new fence, I was wondering.
Yeah, that was mine, I just, I applied for it, I got the permit to put the new fence up.
Thank you. All right, so next I'm gonna ask you to go over to the board what you're proposing physically with the house.
Right.
Usually plans, these are the architectural plans that were submitted, they have not been changed, and these are the ones that are in front of you.
Yeah.
Be your easel.
Yeah, okay. So the first face, A zero four, is the existing. The first floor has one bedroom on it, the kitchen, and a small living room in the back, and then with one, one full bathroom. And the second floor just has the one bedroom, and you kinda have to walk through one bedroom, or pick hallway, or whatever you wanna call this part, to get to that bedroom, and that's the hole upstairs. So basically, we're proposing just to square off the corner of the house, so we can make our family room a little bit bigger. We still have the one bedroom on the first floor with the bathroom. Our kitchen's staying in, right in the middle. The first floor, pretty much staying the same, except we're making the family room a little bit bigger, and having access to the deck in the backyard.
And there's no garage?
There's no garage. And then we have three number one bedrooms here, one, two, and three bedrooms. I don't know how that would happen, but. So with the squared-off back, we can make a little bit nicer second floor to it, and put three bedrooms, the laundry room, and another bathroom up there for the master. The elevations, we just kept it as simple as possible, make it look like a simple house, you know, we're not going crazy with it, just trying to make it work on the lot that we have.
Show what you're doing with the porch and deck?
Yeah, the porch, I just brought it all the way across to the driveway, so we can just come out the front door and walk to the driveway without having to go down the front, because it is so tight to the front, the street. And then the deck, we just put a nice deck off the back, for, you know, just for living.
And that'll remain open decking, you understand that it would count for coverage otherwise? So it has to remain open, can't put a roof over it or anything like that?
Correct.
In terms of, will you be residing the whole house after the renovation?
Yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pretty much clean the whole thing up, put new windows in and make it look like a brand-new house.
Windows all look bad and.
Yeah.
Are you putting in central air?
What's that?
Are you putting in a central air conditioner?
I am.
Where's the condenser gonna go?
We, is the, is it, is there a side yard restriction on?
But doesn't that take up more?
Imperative.
Okay. Well, I, the right, I mean, we'll put them wherever you, it's okay with the town?
We'll ask Mr. Deck that question.
Yeah, I don't know what the, 'cause I know we only have five feet on the right side, if the.
There's a setback requirement.
Oh, 'cause it'll.
Against the house, it's a coverage issue, but it's all.
Right, that's why we're so.
Right, okay.
And I wanna ask the board for another few square feet.
And.
As for that, and is there a possibility, while we're talking about such things, is there a possibility at some point you would want a whole house generator?
Yeah, we might as well add that on there, fifteen feet, twenty feet.
And are you gonna, is there plans to actually, like, pave the driveway, or you're gonna keep it that?
No, I'm gonna pave it, right now it's kinda washed out, it's all broken up, it's half-stone, and it's, so I'm gonna repave the driveway from the street down to the back.
And is the driveway changing at all? Can we talk about the driveway for a few minutes?
Yeah.
The driveway on this plan, it doesn't look like it's changing much, are you changing it?
Well, the existing driveway, a lot of it goes over onto the quarry's property, so we're removing that, because it's not ours.
Okay.
So it'll be a much smaller driveway than it is now, it's almost circular now, you can.
Yeah, it's almost circular.
Yeah, that's, my driveway just goes straight, that, it has a circle, but that's not on my property, so we're just bringing it straight. I guess Ed will explain the driveway.
So where the big tree is, to the.
Those, those two big trees are actually my neighbors.
Right.
Yeah, but they are dying, I figured I'll have to approach the neighbor at some point to see what we gotta do with that, 'cause I know there's some really big dead branches that are.
Oh, the trees are dying.
Yeah, the tree, two trees are dying, not, not the neighbor, no.
And on Mr. Schley's memo, he mentioned about potentially the driveway would require backing out of the stonehouse?
I'm gonna ask Mr. Deck to address that.
All right.
I'm going to ask Mr. Deck to address that.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I'm only asking about the trees, because you're gonna be digging in a driveway, or is it just, you know, are you damaging more of the trees that are?
Well, like I said, the one tree that's right next to the driveway there, if you look at the top of it, it, all the branches are dead, there's no leaves even on it. So the first one definitely has to come down. Like I said, I would, I was gonna talk to the neighbor and, you know, and apply for the tree removal, or whatever the plan is, and deal with that with the neighbor.
Okay, so if I look at these pictures, going back to your pictures,
Yep.
is the third picture, it's not a great way to see it, but is the third picture the best way to see the sideline of your property?
On the, on the left side?
Yeah, looking at the house to the right, where your driveway is.
Oh, to the right, yeah, that big tree that you see to the right?
That's not your property.
That's not my property, that's probably about four feet off of my property, so my.
And that's the quarry's property?
That's the quarry's property, yes.
You'd get if they just carved out a little bit for you.
Well, the woman that lived there before said, she's always, that's what she's did for thirty years, you know, she just turned around and, and the quarry had never had a problem with it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, okay.
Mr. Madden, I didn't ask you the critical, most important question. Who's gonna live in this house?
This is my daughter's first house, she just graduated college, so, and I live right down the street, so it's a perfect situation for me to get her in this town, so.
She's here with us this evening and hiding, so we don't call her to testify.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so this would be four bedrooms.
Correct.
When it's finished, okay.
Mr. Madden, in your experience as a residential builder, would these renovations bring this house up to more modern standards?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And more importantly, does it bring it up to Taylor's expectations of the house daddy's moving?
I'm sure, well.
Nothing further for Mr. Madden.
Are there any questions from the board? None at this time.
Okay.
How close are you, I was trying to figure out how close you were to the property, to the, behind, to the left, I guess, is that pretty close or not?
Behind, behind me?
If you went, yeah, if you looked straight at the house to the left, behind the house that they just redid.
Off the cul-de-sac?
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause I drove the cul-de-sac too, to just to find out how close.
If you went straight back on my property, it's all woods, so he's off. If you went straight back on my property, it's all woods, so he's off behind the house to the left, so. Well, it's all Quarry, I guess it's Quarry property back there. It's, it's, behind my property, straight back is all woods.
So is it, can Talia's, is it pretty shaded back there, is there, is there shrubs?
Well, it's, it's big trees, it's more or less big, big trees, I mean, it, I don't, I don't get any sunlight, I, in the, in the plan, I do wanna take a couple of trees that are in my, I have three trees back there, and they're monsters, but they're, we, we never get any sun back there, so that's why I wanted to take those three trees down to, you know, get us some sunlight on the port, the deck and stuff like that, so.
And were you planning on adding any plantings back there?
I, I will, yeah, whatever the town requires me to do with it, for the tree.
I mean, if they require, we probably would ask, right, I don't know what, there's no town requirement to add, add any landscaping.
No, and there's an allowance for tree removal. Depending on how many trees, you wouldn't necessarily need to replace the trees, or absolutely wants to see some trees, they should ask the applicant to, to buy them.
Town would, but we might.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, I mean, if you want 'em, I'll put 'em in, I'll, put 'em in the back or something, so.
There's enough coverage, maybe evergreens or something, that you, you know, should shift between the properties.
I have no, no problem with that, that's fine.
I didn't know if it was another person testifying to that, or if that was something you were gonna?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take care of that, yeah.
Mr. Madden, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Since you seem to be friendly with the plan.
Yes.
You don't, you have a walkout basement, the architect plan seems to call for a six out, a six eight door coming out the basement?
Yeah, yeah, the.
The elevation shows just the crawl space, or you?
Yeah, it, the, well, the, the cost of the, the way the yard drops off, I guess it, it's about.
On the northerly side?
Yes.
Right, the opposite driveway side?
Right.
So you're walking out, is that?
Yeah, it's gonna be shorter than, you know, a, a regular door, but we are gonna, yeah, yeah, it'll, it'll step up to it.
Didn't like the graders change that much, though.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, good for now.
Mr. Deck, you're up.
I'll avoid an on-deck comment.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Zelli, I should've asked the public if they had any questions based upon that testimony at this time, any questions, not the type of comments, okay, sorry, thank you.
Mr. Deck, for the record, would you give us your full name and business address?
Sure, Edward, middle initial S, last name Deck, D E C, one thirty-one North Michigan Avenue, Kenneworth, New Jersey.
And would you please give us the benefit of your professional educational background?
Yes, I am a graduate of New Jersey Institute of Technology, I am a licensed professional civil engineer and land surveyor in the state of New Jersey. I've been a municipal engineer in two different, three different municipalities, in Union County. Been the principal of Guarial and Deck for the last fifteen years, twenty years. And I've actually appeared in front of the board, many years ago, when I was working for Najarin Associates, we did a couple of large Houghtonian projects in Berners Township, so. And I've also appeared in many other planning boards within Union County and Somerset County.
And your license remains in good standing this evening?
Yes, I'm all paid up.
Okay, really something, thank you so much.
Mr. Deck, would you start by going over the current conditions on the property?
Sure, I'd just like, yes, I'm gonna need some assistance here in how to operate, yeah.
Please get that set up, any exhibits you guys will be submitting, this one, this.
You wanna start on here, or you wouldn't?
Yeah.
Okay, you can zoom in, zoom out, however you wanna.
Got it, got you, yeah.
And just move it however you want.
Alright, great, thank you.
So I'll just ask you that question right off, are you, is what we're seeing on the screen, is what's been submitted, you haven't changed anything yet?
That's right, the plans that are being shown on the screen are the same plans that are in front of the members of the board, last revised July twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five.
Mr. Deck, present conditions, please?
The present conditions are shown on the right-hand side of the plan sheet, and we just minimize this a little bit. You can see the existing structure. And, and there's a, I guess, a, a portion of that structure, if it were to be connected, it would make somewhat of a perfect square or rectangle, and that is the area right here, where the proposed addition is. We are putting in, well, I'll just continue with the existing, we have fencing around the property, but as Mr. Madden testified too, they actually put in newer fence along the northerly sideline of the property. The, we show a U-type of configuration of the existing driveway, however, half of that is not on the property in question, not on Lot Five, but is, is on that Millington Quarry property. It's been used for many years, there's nothing in a deed that I was able to find where there's a joint access easement between the two properties, but the use has been, used considerably, frequently, from the previous property owners, so. By all intents and purposes, it can still be used, although we don't have permission to use it, and that is why we have on our proposed conditions, a, a different type of driveway configuration, however, if in the event that someone wanted to use it, they certainly have, would have, I guess, the ability to do that, although without anyone's permission. On the, the center of the sheet, we have the zoning information, and Mr. Schley and I had gone through, he was very helpful in putting this together, because of that reason with the thirty-three foot wide right away, as opposed to a twenty-five foot right away, we actually had to increase our total area, so here you can see this is going back thirty-three feet from the right away, and here it's twenty, from the center line, I should say. And here we have that additional area that we added into our calculations, that area that's got the chart pack, or that shaded area. So, going back to the zoning chart, and it's also, if we were to refer to Mr. Schley's report, it's very detailed as far as the different areas, and also the different variances, but as you can see here in the bottom of where it says lot coverages, we have two sets, one on the top, one on the bottom. One, the top ones are to the existing right away line, or thirty-three feet, and the bottom ones have that additional eight feet, that to be accounted for, for all our, all of our calculations. Now, there was, I mean, I'm gonna jump around a little bit, but I'd like to get this cleared out, there was a question in the engineers' review about the differences between the proposed areas and coverage, or improvement in coverage, of eighteen seventy-seven to what's shown here, where it says existing and proposed conditions, that's how we generated our runoff and our C coefficient. So you can see here, the purview area is twenty-two, twenty-seven, that, that's incorrect, it should be the eighteen seventy-seven, and by using twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-seven number, that actually gives you a higher C value, so it actually creates a greater runoff value, so. It doesn't actually, it's not, it actually gives us a greater, I guess you could say, increase, which is more conservative in the calculations than if we reuse the smaller number. We have quite a few different existing conditions and quite new conditions that we have to address, and I should go off Mr. Schley's report, I'm not sure if the board has that?
Yeah, we have.
Okay, great. As you can see, in his first chart there, he has the existing and proposed conditions, you can see that there are.
Mr. Deck, I'm gonna make a suggestion, partially because I know we have other applicants too, do we have any disagreement at all with Mr. Schley's table, or can we adopt that?
No, we certainly can adopt that and use that for the different variances and pre-existing conditions that we are asking the board to approve.
Okay, I think we can leave it at that, unless the board has specific questions for you about that.
Okay, just, just wanna go through his comments real quickly, see if there's something I'd like to address, and there are. Item number three, condition upon porch remaining open, that is the intent of the applicant, to keep the porch open, it will not be closed, and that, I guess, could be made part of the conditions of approval. Number six, the applicant shall indicate when any walkways are proposed, as was discussed with the, the owner, we didn't take into account our numbers for an air conditioning unit or pad, so we would like to add, I don't know what, the better number.
Fifteen, eighteen?
Square, it'll be two pads or one?
It'd probably only be one pad, 'cause it's a small house, and that.
But I would say like three by, two, three by threes, that'd be nine, nine, and eighteen, I, I'd say that would be a number that we would like to include for the coverages.
Round it off the twenty.
Okay, we'll do that, makes it easier to calculate.
Now, would that be large enough for a generator as well, or?
No.
No, it'd be for two air conditioners, so.
I thought you said it would be one air conditioner?
I'm sorry?
One air conditioner?
One air conditioner?
I think we could probably get away, I mean, if we, if twenty-five feet.
Yeah, 'cause then if we do a generator, we would like to add that.
I, I, I think the house is only gonna be one generator, uh, one air conditioner.
Well, we should just.
One air conditioner or a generator?
And one generator, yeah, that would.
And how many feet do you need for that?
Well, three by three for the air conditioner usually, and.
Generator, probably three by five.
Yeah, something, yeah, a little bit bigger.
Yeah, so.
But I would agree with.
Twenty-five feet?
Yeah, I, I think that's a good, good number to use. Number six, any walkways, none are proposed. What we're, what is shown here on our, on our plan, we're saying that we have sidewalk in the front and sidewalk in the back, and those are what we're proposing, nothing more than that. The applicant's driveway design, the driveway, and as pointed out in the engineers' report, the backup, it's going to be back up onto the street, onto Stonehouse, there is a good site triangle easement, only because of where the edge of pavement is in relationship to the roadway and to the cars coming in either direction. There is room, although it wouldn't be a turnaround, it'd be a K-turn type maneuver, up at the end of the proposed driveway area, adjacent to the deck and that new area of the building that's going to be constructed, so. Right now, it looks like it's gonna be either back up or turn around in that area, or that U-turn, or that U-driveway can be utilized. There are, you know, other properties along that roadway in either direction that have that same configuration as far as backing out, and seems to be something that's workable and safe.
What'd you say, what'd you call it, a site triangle?
The site, well, I don't show the site triangle here, but the site line, as they're backing up, it can be, is visual from either, you can see oncoming traffic from each direction.
I, I was there today, I was pretty, I talked pretty, I was just saying.
Yeah, you know what's, it's different about this, usually when they do a site triangle, they do it considering the cars coming out front, so they locate the driver's eye in a different spot, if you're backing out.
Yeah, it's like.
This is considerably longer than typical lash toe, because the driver's eye is now in front of the car, further away, so. The county is also gonna opine on this, 'cause it's a new driveway opening, so, it's, the lot is so tight, I don't know how, other than just tacitly giving them enough purview's cover to de facto be able to run over to that other driveway side, but that just seems like bad planning, so. What they've done here is good planning, the best they can do with a lot, so, I mean, the county will decide maybe if there's a mirror or something that can be situated there, literally, that happens in spots where site distance is not great, but there's really limited options on a lot like this, 'cause. And to create a turnaround, which you'll see on one of the next applications we have tonight, where they paved the backyard, you can imagine what would happen to your purview's cover here.
Mr. Quinn, did you say that there's a new driveway opening, I believe we're, Mr. Deck, we're using the same opening room?
No, we're using the same location of the existing driveway, but it's changed a little bit.
Looks like you widened it, you're, you're reconfiguring the map of the driveway, so I think, I, I think the county will wanna see, since you're gonna be in the county right away.
You have enough room there to turn around and pull out face front into the road, you don't have to back onto that road.
To where? They have eighteen feet.
It would be very hard to turn around.
They have eighteen feet, it's very bad.
About eighteen by twenty.
They have one car, I mean, if they have one car, they could easily maneuver that, but if you have two or three cars in that driveway?
Yeah.
Four, three cars, no, you don't, you don't want to back onto that road.
I know, but if you have a four-bedroom house, you gotta anticipate you're gonna have two or three cars.
Unless people know the park knows it. Okay.
Mr. Deck, if the, let me ask you this, if the board were inclined to increase the coverage variance, is there area at the end of the driveway where a turnaround could be created, and still within our property boundaries?
Yes, we can do something, enlarge that squared off area where I have the dimension of eighteen feet, side to side.
Where, where are you talking about specifically?
Um, if you were to look at the screen.
At the back of the house.
It's a, yeah, sort of midway from that new addition, towards back of the house.
To my mind, what are you gonna get there?
Well, it's not gonna be much.
Five, six feet, it's just gonna be a blacktop, and I don't see it being an effective turnaround area, right, 'cause it's just too narrow, again, it all, it all depends on how many cars that are gonna be.
Yeah, okay, alright.
But we still would have some usefulness of the existing driveway that's going on through the other property for backup use, so that could also be used for backup, like a backup or K-turn type maneuver.
Yep, okay.
So if you had two cars in the driveway, are they stacked, basically? Are they, you know, one car comes in, then there are cars behind it, or is it wide enough to have two cars like this?
No, it's.
Side by side?
One tandem type configuration.
No, it's, it's, eighteen feet in the back is wide enough for two.
Oh, yeah, in the back.
At the very back gate for two cars side by side.
It's just getting out and in, and figuring that out.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, no different than the hills and the smaller drivers in up there, it's not a main road, so.
Right.
Forgive me, because I didn't hear what you said about the rear, I, I know you're saying there might not be enough room, I'm wondering, could we widen it somewhere back there and then narrow the front, narrow the driveway in front?
Well, the, the driveway's already at eleven feet, excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay.
The driveway's eleven feet, so that's pretty narrow, as it is. Well, and then we go to the driveway where we, where we, along the existing roadway, we have it winded out to eighteen, but the actual passageway would be eleven.
If we made the.
So some of the existing driveway that you're proposing to remove, if any of that stayed, could we get a turnaround?
Uh, well, there's, as I mentioned to the board chairman, that area, I'll, I'll point to it, let me see.
And I do apologize, I missed what you answered, what your response was.
That, I guess, I don't know where my arrowhead is on here, here we go, okay, so this area here.
Yep.
If we were to utilize that, then someone could back into there and then come out headfirst.
So widen the driveway from eighteen feet to twenty?
In, in that area alone.
Twenty-two feet or something.
Well, that's five feet, 'cause we had to be five feet off the property line, so, you know, that'll be another, be twenty-three feet, but, you know, they could always actually maybe even go back into the adjoining property a little bit.
Well, we could also request a variance with five feet, if that would assist.
I just think it's dangerous trying to back onto the road.
I, I, I don't think anybody disagrees with that, we're just, unfortunately, we don't own that land, that's still.
Similar to that, I, I don't wanna back onto the main road.
How much more, how much purview's do we make it would be?
Well, five feet by.
I'm looking at this, just trying to imagine maneuvering cars, and it just depends on how many cars, it, no matter how, if you have three cars there, I don't care what you're doing, how much blacktop you got back there, unless you're going on the Quarry property, you're not getting around out front.
I don't wanna solve for multiple cars, so if we could just focus on one car, could, if, if, could one car do a K-turn and go out forward?
I think if you.
In the existing plan that you have right here?
Well, yes, I have that area here, I'm showing it to be removed, it's, has the chart, like the.
Hey, this is what I drew, is this what you're talking about right here?
Yep, exactly.
Squaring it up?
Yep.
Alright, so go ahead, keep going then.
So this area here, if we were able to utilize that in our plan design?
It's really hard to see that, can we try and?
Can we zoom it in a little bit, yeah?
Yeah.
Would be easier if I had it on the actual paper?
No, I think I have it here.
Yeah, there you go.
This area here, if we could utilize that area as part of our purview's coverage.
Battery now is proposed to be removed.
That's right, yes.
That's what I was.
Because you, you, you have an ordinance, no, not closer to five feet, so that's why they removed it, so they're respecting the separation, so, I also drew that on this plan, if you cut that out and just touch the, the property line.
If they ask for another variance to be closer, you know, within five feet of, of that one.
There'll also be some additional purview's cover too, but.
Yeah, the purview's cover is increased.
That'd be the best thing they could do.
Yeah, I'd like to see them use as much, I, I was at the property today, and, you know, it, it, you could, you could not. You could not.
The question.
I've had properties like this in, especially Union County and Somerset, even Somerset County, where they give you, make you do little blacktop aprons in the front yard.
Yeah.
So that when you're backing up, you pull into this apron so that you can turn around and go out the front street.
Yeah.
Those are on site.
If the speed limit was less on Stonehouse, it would be a different story, but it's, it's forty miles per hour.
It doesn't, it doesn't.
People go.
Well, the county, I'm telling you, the county's gonna want to see, you're gonna have to submit to the county because of the driveway opening, and I think that might help you, that little turn cut out might.
Yeah, I agree.
Show an intent turn.
Yeah, I, I would agree, if that's something that the board be willing to allow us to do, I, I think that's the answer.
You can certainly amend to request further coverage variance as well as a driveway setback variance.
Yeah, a driveway setback variance, and if you could estimate what you think that could be, and I'm sure as a condition of approval, it's specific to the driveway.
I think it has a scale.
Right, in addition, okay. I think that, as the board engineer and I just looked at the plans, we would ask for an additional, besides the twenty-five feet for AC and generator, for this turnaround area of an additional fifty square feet.
So if you're fifteen and twenty-five, maybe you just go to a hundred.
We're going the wrong way here.
I know, I know. But we have good planning reasons to do this.
No, no, I mean, we kind of understand it.
And that's why this is such a slippery slope to go.
And, and, yeah, I don't, I don't.
It has to be, it has to be. Could you narrow the driveway more, maybe ten instead of eleven, or shave off two squares of the.
I mean, that would help.
Yeah, that would make a difference, for sure, I mean.
What's the most narrow that you could go down?
The track is at thirty feet, that gets thirty feet back.
Yeah.
If you go to ten feet?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get thirty feet back.
Ten feet would be, to answer your question, ten feet would be about the narrowest.
It's your application.
My, my daughter was liking that nice turn.
We're not saying anything about the quarry. We're not saying anything about that. We can only, we can only opine on your specific law, that's what we do, what you do when you leave here.
All right, so, we'll, we'll narrow that eleven-foot wide section to ten, and we'll add that area where we could have a backup space for a turnaround.
Okay.
Going out to the street.
So, is that net us an additional forty-five feet?
No, it was, we were thinking of fifty, right, about.
Right, seventy-five.
Seventy-five, we're gonna take another thirty.
Oh, that's forty-five?
Net thirty, forty-five, yes, you're right.
I like round numbers, so I would do fifty.
Yeah, I would too, I'd have to agree.
Like I minimize the overage?
I know.
We were on town.
I'm with you on that.
Okay. Okay. So what would that do, does, Mr. Slade, do you know where that number would put us in terms of our percentage of requested coverage?
I think you should stick with the engineers.
Okay, I have no idea where we are now.
Well, okay. We're at nineteen seventy-seven, add another fifty to that.
Two hundred and seven?
By eighty-nine, all right, eight, nine, one, six, yep.
Oh, I, you're.
I'm like.
Sorry about that.
Twenty-two point seven four.
Sorry, what?
Twenty-two point seven.
Twenty-two point seven four.
Okay. Personally, I feel better about that number and the way it's being used.
And what's, what's the number on the driveway setback? Is that gonna need to go?
Does that go to like?
The, this driveway setback?
Make it non.
Wait, if you're adding this turnaround area, does that?
Yeah, I was gonna go right up to the property line.
Zero?
Stays at zero.
Zero.
Okay.
It's in existing condition with more space.
Still is required with variance, okay.
So, Mr. Sal, you're adding the, that variance as well?
Yes, we're formally amending to request a zero-foot driveway setback.
Okay.
Your five is required otherwise.
Uh, the next comment, number eight, any existing trees, I believe the App can describe which trees are going to be removed. We do show a tree and a, two trees in the back.
Yeah.
And.
Three trees in the back.
Three trees in the back, and these two are not going anywhere. But we will be looking, because you may be talking to the adjoining property owner, to see what we could do with those. But they will be replaced as per the township ordinance.
I think, I think we were talking about they being replaced regardless of whether the ordinance requires replacements or not, because that, it might be that the ordinance doesn't require replacements.
Oh, okay, so we replace them whether the ordinance requires them or not?
We'll agree to that as a condition.
There should be a number, is it, we're okay with a one-for-one replacement, or?
Yeah.
Okay, so comply with the ordinance, but in any event, provide at least a one-for-one replacement.
One-for-one replacement. Thank you.
All right, item number nine, we will make sure, and I guess the condition of approval will be that all of the outdoor lighting, such as lighting above the doorways and lighting areas along the driveway, parking area be shielded and facedownward, so there's no direct light source that is available, can be seen from either cars or anyone passing by. Um, number ten, screening, I don't know if that was resolved with the App can or not, but I believe what the App can's saying, from what I've seen in the pictures and what I've seen at the site, that it's pretty well screened on all the sides, except for the front, but that could be, I guess, added. There's some screening there already, so.
I think he was asking between lot four and lot five.
Right, between the new, that's between the new house and our house.
Right.
Mr. Madden, what is the height of the new fence that you?
It's a six-foot fence.
So we have six-foot screening.
It does go, I do plan on bringing it to the front of my house, but I just didn't finish, because I got this construction there.
You just, you just can't get into the front yard.
No, right, it's, it ends at the.
The house.
At the corner of the house, yeah.
And that's a solid fence?
That's a solid fence, six-foot fence, yeah.
So that would act as a screening in itself. So I, I don't know if that's adequate, or if there's any other comments by.
I was just raising it as a discussion point, I didn't see any need myself.
Okay. Okay, any other, the other comments on the planner's report, we agree to as far as construction permits, and getting, of course, the approval, as the attorney had said, that it will be receiving a, pretty much a go-ahead from the, from the county.
We will, we certainly accept a condition of approval, that whatever the county requires, we need to do, we understand that. Shall we move to Mr. Quinn's report?
Can we just go back to number fourteen, my last comment about the partial destruction? And.
Yes.
The applicant understands that if the destruction goes beyond partial destruction, and I'm not saying it's even close right now, but because there's some demolition, you're not able to demolish the dwelling, for example, all the way down to the foundation, and then go ahead and build it, or if you're going to demolish any more that is shown on the plan, you need to check with the zoning officer to make sure you're not going beyond.
Too far.
Point of partial destruction.
Okay.
To the point where you're, for zoning compliance purposes, you're creating a new dwelling, and you'll be subject to additional variances.
Okay.
So as long as you understand that, but you're, you're comfortable that the, the bones of the house are, are good to work with.
Yeah, yeah, everything that's on the plan, I'll be okay with it, yep.
Just want to be clear on that.
Okay. And, Mr. Slade, were you comfortable with the other comments for the rest of your points in that memo?
Yeah, they were basic, run-of-the-mill comments, other than what we discussed, so I have nothing further.
Nothing run-of-the-mill about your memos. Okay, Mr. Quinn?
Yeah, I'll go through these quickly.
Sure.
We talked about number one, right, that they're increasing less than a thousand square feet, so technically they're not showing any stormwater management. Number two is my request to see if the applicant's willing to provide some infiltration for the excess cover, anything that's over what's permitted by ordinance, just like six hundred and some.
Right, and I spoke to the App can, he agrees to that.
The reason why I ask is, that's the two, because the soils here are supposed to be pretty good, you'll find out.
Yeah.
You start messing around out there, but they're B soils, so there should be perfect material there.
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
No objection to that request.
Three, we talked about annoys him, but the driveway for the county involvement. Five is the RSI, as they technically meet the partnering requirement. Six was just a comment about the wetland aspects that they had identified, the wetland statement. He clarified the impervious cover, and on number seven, oh, actually, there was some, and I don't know if the architect did this because there's difference between the inside and outside dimensions, but you have a footprint area that's difficult to show on the. And the reason I raise it too, is because we're at the impervious cover limit.
Right.
I just want to make sure we're.
No, no, I, we're, we're comfortable using those shown on our plan and what the hell I generated them. There are some differences a lot of times between the architect's dimensions and.
Well, yours are more, so I'm hoping that you're, you're.
No, I, I'd rather use the higher number and be more conservative.
That's fine. Number nine, I, I guess this, Mr. Madden, I don't know if he's clear on this, but the architect is showing a door coming out the side. I don't know if you're gonna have enough grade to make that work, your grading doesn't reflect that door, so. And the reason why I raise that, if you do have a door coming out there, you're probably gonna have some sort of platform or, or landing area.
Or, or a shorter door, but the door, the door that's there now is, is only, okay, it's probably five feet high.
Oh, I don't want to beat it dead, like, if, if there is a door out there, just, there can't be a landing pad or anything.
Right.
To discharge onto, because you're at the impervious cover.
Yeah, the door steps down, it actually steps on the inside of the basement.
Oh.
The door opens up, and then you step down to.
Oh, 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 okay, oh, that's interesting, right. Um, number ten is about the SCD, if you guys go over twenty-five hundred square feet, you're dealing with a town, not with.
Right, their, their requirements, yep, we're familiar with those.
You talked about, you talked about the trees for the driveway, you're gonna show those, and also that we're very careful here to hammer out the impervious cover limits that we're finding acceptable, just make sure you stay within that.
Right.
Can I ask you just a question about the, where the drywell would, would be situated? Is that just something that they'll work out with, with you, with township engineers?
They can locate that anywhere in the rear yard, they have lots of roof for it at the back.
There's room for it, but there's a clear slope.
Sorry?
There, there's room for it, but there's a clear slope as to where the water's going.
There is, actually, that might help them, as a matter of fact. It's up to them where they put it, I don't have any restrictions. I think the town might not permit them to go closer than ten feet to the property line, but where they put it in the backyard? It's all basically draining towards the back and slightly towards the left, because you're looking at the backyard, so. I don't know that it matters where they put it. The left side would make more sense, because that's where you can capture as much of the roof area as, as you can, on the left side of the house, and they discharge there, so.
But it'll get, like, the plan will get reviewed, and if it's in an area that doesn't make sense, something.
The township engineer will review that, I probably won't see it. My letter will state the fact that, you know, the resolution will state that the applicant agreed to provide some infiltration on the property, and it will be subject to review and approval of the town.
Perfect.
So, I take that you're gonna comply with everything in Mr. Quinn's memo.
Absolutely, yes.
Same with Mr. Slade's memo as well?
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yes, okay, that is.
I have nothing further for Mr. Deck?
Any questions?
I just, no, I'm sorry, to interrupt, the commission, environmental commission?
Yep, we're gonna get to that, yep, let's do it.
Okay. Well, I went through that, and it's pretty much exactly what the board engineer recommended, as far as doing some sort of recharge, and we agreed to that, so. Everything else about, you know, they make mention of if we're going to be replacing or implementing new landscaping or trees, it'd be those that are common to this area, native plants, so. There's nothing, I, I, we don't have an issue with any of the comments made in their review letter.
I take that, I interpret that to mean you guys will comply with everything in their memo?
Yep.
Okay.
Does the board have any questions at this time? Do we hear from any of the neighbors about this project?
We haven't.
Not noticed? Does the public have any questions, please follow me to search?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If this isn't a C one, I don't know what is, when we're about a fifth of the required lot area. However, it's also justifiable under a C two. Two of the purposes of zoning come to mind, zoning, number A, to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use of development of lands of the state, in a manner which will promote the public health, safety morals, and general welfare by updating the home, to have four bedrooms and two full baths, making the home better suited for modern families, and purpose I, to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. This, in this case, by enhancing the neighborhood with an attractive newly renovated and expanded home that will complement the other homes in the surrounding neighborhood. Furthermore, the renovation expansion of the existing home will assist in conservating property, conserving property values in the neighborhood, which does remain a purpose of the land use regulation, even though not expressly stated in the statute. That's under Home Builders League versus Township of Berlin. In this case, negative criteria are also satisfied, as all the variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. In that regard, we note that the proposed expansion, except for the open deck and the modest front porch, entails only modest expansion of the footprint of the main house, the expansion primarily being filling in that corner and then going up. Furthermore, there's only one home in any way affected by the expansion, the subject home, which is the much larger home built, just recently built, to the left. Property is otherwise surrounded by the undeveloped former quarry property to the east, the wooded rear portion of the flaglot behind it, which hosts a very large home, that is well-distanced behind the applicant's home, and was well-buffered already by existing woodlands and wooded areas to the south. On the, and on the opposite side of Stonehouse, there's a full wooded area before you see that neighborhood. So really, the only property even ostensibly as affected is the one right next door. We've buffered that already with a six-foot privacy fence, and no objection, so far from that neighbor. With regard to the newly requested variance for the zero-foot driveway setback, I would just notice again, with regard to the negative criteria, that is purely the quarry land. I'm sure that, they're not here objecting, and it just would have no effect on them whatsoever. Obviously, the reason of such a setback normally is to avoid having your cars too close to the house next door to you, there simply isn't one. I don't think the squirrels will object too much, so I think we're okay with that one. As usual, thank you for hearing us, we appreciate your patience, we would appreciate a positive vote.
I just want to see if anyone from the public has any comments on this application. Okay, seeing none. Okay, on to the board. Does anyone want to make some comments, or deliberate, or make a motion on the Madden application?
Go with someone up first.
Yeah, go ahead, Chris, thank you.
Okay. So I think the five variances been requested, first is for the front yard setback of the dwelling, proposed at five point five nine feet. For seventy-five feet is the required minimum. Next is the side yard setback of the dwelling to the north, five point six nine feet proposed, or twenty feet is the required minimum. Next is for the combined side yard setback of the dwelling, twenty-seven point nine one feet proposed, or fifty feet is the required minimum. Next is lot coverage ratio, we have twenty-two point seven four percent, right?
Yep.
Fifteen percent is the max permitted. And then the driveway setback, zero feet, you know, to the extent you need to put that in turnaround area in there. As well as the AC generator and, yeah, those pads, yeah, those pads, okay. And then as far as conditions go, everything in Mr. Slade's memo from August 14th. Everything in Mr. Quinn's memo from August 28th, everything in environmental commission memo from July 28th. A few conditions start appearing, some of these may be repetitive, already covered in the other memos as mentioned. App can will provide the board with a copy of the waiver of notice from County Board. Close app will be open, it's covered in one of the memos. App can to install tree screen to the rear, along the rear property line of the unit, and I don't know what's talked discussed.
We agreed to replace trees at one to one.
One for one, I think is what we said, at a minimum. At a show point.
The environmental commission's issued two memos, the board mentioned this July 28th, they issued the second one on August 25th.
Oh.
I think I only have one.
Yeah.
Do you have the August 25th one?
I don't think so. I'm gonna get it.
Okay, let me just take a look at that.
I have July 28th.
Mr. Sal, did you guys see the, the August 23rd and the July 28th?
I'm not sure that we do. You're the July 28th.
July 28th.
We have July twenty eighth also.
This is high.
Yeah.
That's all right, it's a long one.
Okay, everyone.
Not that.
There we go.
Just more to that.
Yeah.
We refuse to comply with anything. Other properties.
Is there, are there significant differences, Ms. Tsai?
Uh, no, um, I mean, you wanna, you give it to Mr. Zelli to look at.
Yeah, let, let Mr. Zelli take a look, and then we can.
I don't think there's anything objectional in there.
Probably all the patents, stuff.
There is nothing different that raises any issue, we'll comply.
Okay. Comply with both environmental commission.
Will comply with both.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay, great. Replace the two trees that are supposedly removed, the ones that were placed in regardless of what the ordinance requires it. Otherwise, applicant will comply with the tree replacement ordinance. And, I think that's it, actually. That's it, we're good.
Okay, does anybody wanna kick us off here?
Um, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Paktar.
I say this is a C one, hardship variance based on the size of the lot, it's very, very undersized, and I don't think you can, and the side setbacks is why you can't possibly comply on a lot of this size. So, I would make a motion to deem the application complete, and for the board attorney to include all the stipulations that were mentioned before, and draft a resolution to approve this application.
Gotcha.
So, I would second that, but can I make one specific stipulation? That the additional forty-five square feet that we were talking about, or?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five square feet.
Forty-five was.
No, it was forty-five for the net.
Yeah.
Be specific to the driveway.
Well, some of that included the air conditioning and a generator.
Right, but, but we had agreed to go over, because we want the driveway to be configured so as to be able to make a turn and pull out. Otherwise, I don't, we wouldn't necessarily need to go over. So, can we specify that the additional square footage for the, for the driveway that we had come up with?
But it was more than thirty, because, it's more than forty-five, because we, they're going to, what they were going.
It was fifty square feet.
It was fifty for the driveway.
Fifty for the driveway, plus twenty-five for the.
It was twenty-five for the refrigerator, for the HVAC and the generator.
But they're gonna be getting back another.
Pardon me, can we specify that the fifty square feet be specific to the driveway and be added to the drawings?
I think that fifty included the AC pad and the generator, because we're taking away thirty feet to narrow the driveway.
Yeah, no, it didn't, it was fifty for the driveway turnaround, and then to narrow the driveway and reduce that by thirty, so it was twenty total for the driveway.
Net twenty, net twenty for the driveway.
That's right.
Yeah, and then twenty-five pads.
That's right.
So, it's a forty-five additional, I think.
Twenty for the driveway.
I thought we said fifty additional, because we were gonna.
Right, but you're losing thirty.
I understand, no, but you still, he said fifty, net total.
No.
I use, I calculated, added fifty to get twenty-two point seven four, because we were talking forty-five, and I said fifty. So, I used fifty to calculate twenty-two point seven four, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So then. So then stick with fifty, and then say twenty-five and twenty-five, so net twenty-five for the driveway.
Okay.
And then twenty-five for the pads.
Okay, so we're gonna portion that additional fifty square feet, twenty-five to the driveway, twenty-five to the pads.
Yeah, or a minimum of twenty-five for the driveway, because the truth is, if you didn't use the pad and you wanted to make the driveway a little bit bigger, I think for us, you know, we suggested moving your numbers over, and you have another variance, and we wanna make sure that, you know, that this overage number would be attributed to the safety reason that we're giving you the overage number.
The point being that the fifties, the fifty total could be for something else, it has to be for the driveway.
Has to be a minimum of twenty-five for the driveway. We're saying, okay?
You understand, you understand the point.
Absolutely.
The drawing set will be updated to reflect the overage.
Okay, are there, are there any other comments before Ms. Bowman finishes second?
I heard just C one.
Yeah, I, I would add, I, I think it's under both personally, C one and C two, this is an extremely small lot. You know, we do not easily give overage numbers, as Mr. Zelli knows, and here we are arguing for bigger numbers. So, we're very thoughtful and mindful on what is the overage, how do we make this better, how do we make this a safe property? You know, you're looking at a four-bedroom house, so, you know, obviously, there's gonna be a family in it, we wanna make sure it's a safe situation. You know, coming out on that road, you know, even with your triangle site, does not make it easy. But I, I actually think the, the improvements will be great for the family that's in there, but also for the neighborhood. It actually would be nice to have this house redone. You know, you have a, a large house to the left, you've got large lots around you with large houses, so I don't feel like it's out of character for the neighborhood at all, so I think it would be an improvement for the town.
I think it's a huge improvement to the housing stock period, especially on main roof, because what's there now is not nice to look at.
And I do think that the, that the safety benefit certainly outweighs any detriment here. Again, which gives me comfort allowing for the overage, and also the dry well, so if you're going to manage the water.
Was that a second?
So, that is a second to the, to Ms. Paktar's motion.
Okay. Ms. Slaman, we're ready when you are.
Okay, Ms. Herrera?
Yes.
Ms. Pedici?
Yes.
Mr. Crabb?
Yes.
Ms. Bowman?
Yes.
Ms. Paktar?
Yes.
Ms. Silver?
Yes.
Chairman of the Generals?
Yes.
Thank you all very much, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you very much, guys.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Ross application, which is ZB two-five zero-two-zero. Father Ross is here? Yeah, I know. We're gonna get a bad reputation, everyone's like.
One second.
Yes, we'll do, yeah.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
I'm doing great.
My name's Brad Ross. Oh, yes, sir.
I'll take the blame for that one.
Uh-oh.
Okay. All right, before I swear anybody in, just to point out for the record, I did read the applicant's notice. I do find that they did a good job with it, it was sufficient, time we served, all the content was good. Published in Adversible News on August twenty-first, and sent to owners of property who are in two hundred feet by certified mail on August sixteenth. Board is the jurisdiction here to decide the case in my humble legal opinion. Sir, are you the only one gonna be testifying, or do you have other people testifying today?
Our architect is here as well.
So, I'm gonna sort the two of you guys in, as well as our board professionals, and then we get going, right?
Okay.
Do all four of you raise your right hand, swaying? Do all four of you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Sir, please introduce yourself, name and address for the right.
Hello all, my name is Brad Ross. My wife and I, Danielle, are longtime residents of the Somerset Hills area, and we have lived at our house on Five Tisley Street for the past eleven years. We've raised our children here, and as they grow, we hope to update our home and keeps our, keep our roots firmly in the community. As we have planned, it's become clear that we need to seek variances, which brings us here tonight. I am happy to have the help of our architect, Dan Enson, who is here to help answer any questions you may have. We love our neighborhood, care deeply for its character, and so thank you in advance for your time.
Thank you.
That's all you got? Mr. Ross, anything else you wanna say, or?
No, that's it, thank you so much.
Mr. Ross, did you take these pictures that are with your application, or was that the applicant?
I took those.
Please take them, okay.
Is there any questions from the public before we switch? Okay.
Do you speak with any neighbors about the project?
Can.
Yes, we have, in fact, one of our neighbors is here tonight.
Any feedback from?
Did you get any concerns from any of your neighbors? You.
Uh, no, ma'am.
Okay.
Got a two thumbs up over there.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so you're testifying, please stand in front of the microphone so we can pick you up. And your name and, no, business affiliation, business address.
Sure. My name's Daniel Enson, I'm principal of Mendham Design Architects, located in, in Mendham, New Jersey, on Twenty-seven East Main Street, in the center of town. I'm.
And please give the board your professional background, credentials, education experience, things like that.
Uh, sure. My professional degree is from New Jersey Institute of Technology. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey since two thousand and seven. My license is in good standing, and I have appeared and presented in front of this board and all of the adjacent municipalities.
Okay, thank you very much, we'll accept this.
You're accepting, go ahead. Do you have any exhibits who we can see?
Uh, no, no exhibits, I have copies of the plans which, which you have from the.
Okay, fantastic.
With no changes.
Thank you.
Uh, some property is, is located in the R six zone. Home was constructed in approximately nineteen thirty-eight, so it's still mostly its original form. The, the existing property as it stands is a significantly undersized property. It's a non-conforming property for the zone. In the R six zone, the required is three-quarters of an acre, point seven-five acre, and the existing lot size is point one-seven acre. So, significantly undersized in overall size, and then also the required lot width of a hundred and fifty feet. The existing property is only fifty feet wide. So, as a result of that, essentially, any work that's proposed on the property or on the house is, and the existing house is already non-conforming. So, the, the proposed work and the variances requested consist of essentially three things. Looking at the site plan, there are new dormers proposed within the confines of the existing roof, of the existing second story of the house. There is a proposed covered deck, which is even with the, the level on the rear of the house of the, the main story, which is important, because the ground slopes significantly from front to back, it's essentially a daylight basement facing towards the rear, and then continues to slope all the way down towards the back end of the property. So, the deck that's proposed is at the first floor level, which, from the front of the house, is what you would think of as a first floor level. But when you get to the rear, and you're looking at it, you can see in the photos that are there, the deck is elevated over eight feet off the ground over the existing paved area that's in the back of the house. And the third item is a, based on how we're proposing to more efficiently enter into the house and make use of the existing basement space, and then getting into the area, a, a small area of, of walkway, which is highlighted to in the right rear corner of the house, which is now a landscape bed. There is a, a door proposed going into that area, and that would allow you to walk through from the driveway to that door. To offset and deal with the fact that it's such an undersized property, and therefore has a high impervious coverage number, the, there is an existing patio in the back of the house that was in existence when, when they purchased the home, and that patio is, that's down at a much lower level because of the slope of the property. That patio is noted on the site plan as being proposed to be removed and returned for long. So, that would significantly, with the proposal, with that small amount of impervious for the walkway, with the large amount of reduction here, would actually significantly reduce the overall impervious coverage of the property. So, one thing to note in terms of the, the required setbacks and other elements, if you look at the zoning table, all except for two of the items of the required, some of the requirements on the table are pre-existing non-conforming. So, almost every aspect of the house violates a setback or a coverage in some way. The proposed work that's here, we were careful to, to keep all of the dormers and all of the other elements that are here do not intensify the pre-existing non-conforming conditions. So, where we are projecting a little bit further out in the back with the deck area, we're well away from the rear yard setback. That's the one thing that actually does conform. But any of the newly proposed work here does not encroach any further into the required yards than, than the existing house does now, so nothing is intensified.
Then that's including the height as well, the height of the.
That is correct, the, the, is the pre-existing ridge and height of the house stays as they are.
Okay.
And a big part of, of what we're looking to do is the reason why dormers are proposed as opposed to kind of lopping off the top of the house and creating a full footprint second story is this house, you know, being, you know, built in nineteen thirty-eight, it has a lot of nice character to it, consistent with houses at that time and along the rest of the street, and so you can see from the various proposed dormers and things, we're, we're maintaining the appearance and the, the character of the existing house. And then just creating and using these dormers in order to gain additional space, but not necessarily aesthetically impact the roof lines of what's there currently.
Okay, so, sorry, I just wanna make sure I understand, so are you saying your, your lot coverage is going down?
That is correct.
Based on this table?
What's the existing lot coverage, is it forty-two point two percent?
Uh, the existing lot coverage.
Ah.
I got you. Just wanted to hear that story number two.
Forty-two point two percent.
Got you.
And the proposed, by removal of that patio, but the small amount for the walkway would reduce our lot coverage to thirty-eight point two percent.
Okay, and it's currently approved for?
You mean the, the required for the zone?
Yeah.
Uh, the required for the zone is a maximum coverage of eighteen percent.
Okay.
I think, I think you're.
I don't, the existing.
The existing is forty-two point two, I think you were permitted to have thirty-seven point seven five.
Thirty-seven point seven five, is that what was previously approved, Mr. Slade?
That's what I, I don't have. I think it's to be the pre-existing non-conforming coverage that predates the, the eighteen percent requirement, and the simple reason for that is that the patio that's proposed to be removed was, it was not done with permits, and that, that's, so removing it gets it back down to where it should be.
That gets you down to thirty-seven point seven five.
Legal pre-existing coverage, and then there, there's a minimal increase resulting from the, the walkway, which is the only added coverage, so it's.
The thirty-seven point seven five pre-exists.
Legally pre-exist, thirty-seven point seven five.
Legally pre-exists the coverage.
That's without the patio.
Okay, so thirty-seven point seven five pre-exists. And we're at forty-two point two, going down to thirty-eight point one-nine, okay.
Well, you're thirty-seven point seven five going up to thirty-eight point one-nine.
Legally.
Legally, but in reality, it's forty-two something more enormous, okay.
Right, this, this patio was, was in existence when they purchased the house.
Yeah, the applicant did not put a patio, but it was.
Yeah, no, no, I didn't say they did, okay.
Uh, so. So, yeah, looking at the, the various sides of the structure, so from the street, the only perceived work is this is the existing gable roof line on the front of the house, and you can see setback approximately two feet from the face of that, into that roof line, are the shed dormers coming out of both sides. And then, when you come down along the right side of the house, you get another kind of side view of that one shed dormer, where you can see it's set back from that gable face. And then there is a shed dormer proposed along the rear base of the house, and then this is the elevated covered deck area.
Those dormers would be, look consistent, the additional shed dormers would look consistent with the dormers that are there now in terms of color and all of that, and?
Yeah, there are, there are no dormers currently on the house.
Okay, but there is, I looked at the pictures, and there's, it looks like dark and light, and dark and.
Yeah, the material, I mean, consistent with, with the style and the age of the house, there's, so there's a stucco, cement stucco finish on the house, and then there's some brown painted wood timbering that breaks up that stucco. And so, yes, the, the proposed dormers and, and all of the elements of the house, anything being added is proposed to be consistent with those materials. So, we would have the same, same trim work, the same cement stucco, the same asphalt channel roofing, so essentially just to blend in with what's there, and try to, as minimally as possible, change the appearance of it.
So...
I just have one question. Does it, it looks like there's a garage door in the back of the house that's not being used as a, or...
No, it wouldn't be possible to fit a current vehicle.
Understood.
Maybe a motorcycle.
Right. And in the new structure, there is no garage door whatsoever?
There is, no, I mean, that garage currently is used as part of the basement space.
Right, no, I noticed from the plans, I just wanted to make sure.
And it would continue, they're continuing to propose to use it as part of the basement and actually eliminate the garage door because it's not usable as a garage.
So the cars are parked in the driveway all the way down, or are they parked on the street normally?
Uh, typically, I believe in the driveway, maybe sometimes on the street.
Yes, in the driveway largely, in the streets sometimes. We're able to...
Because it goes, it slants down.
Yes, it goes down and then makes a left turn and then makes a right.
Okay, so you'll still have a kind of a curve at the back, in the back of the house, or?
Yes, it's shaped like an L going down.
Okay, okay.
And the shed, is the shed staying on this property?
Yes, the existing shed is, yes, we're, no, they're going to modify the shed.
Okay, so that's staying.
The current, no, go ahead. The current roof is an asphalt shingle roof?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and you're putting all these dormers in, I assume you're stripping the whole roof off and replacing it?
Yeah, they'll be doing a new architectural asphalt shingle roof.
Okay, so you're going to do a new period of asphalt.
Yeah, to blend the two, the older shingle with the newer, it's most likely not going to look very good. And so, yeah, the amount of shingle that's remaining, it would make sense for them to just re-roof all at one time.
So are you going to magical tier now, or are you choosing a different style?
I think the shingle itself would be fairly consistent. It's a standard, you know, kind of three-tab, high-definition architectural shingle. They're not proposing to do another type of, you know, like a slate look or another type of asphalt shingle roof. The color, my guess would probably be consistent, although I don't know exactly what color. And the, you know, in terms of usage and what those spaces and areas are before within the house, uh, to the right of the page on sheet eighty-three, you have pre-existing second story, has two small bedroom spaces, stairwell located in the middle, and some additional closet space. The proposed with the dormers would essentially allow for, you know, bathroom, you know, better bathroom space up in this area. Still two bedrooms, but some better ceiling height within those rooms, less kind of sloping ceilings coming down. Some more head clearance and also some additional closet space. So not, you know, a very large increase in terms of overall square footage, but that, that small amount makes a big impact in terms of what's usable, you know, within the house. The first floor, small minor interior renovations planned, but nothing significant. The, and then the covered deck area, you can see in the back area here is ten feet by fifteen feet and would also provide stairwell to the side with access down to that pre-existing paved area that's down at that lower grade level to the exterior. And then at the basement level, there would be, you know, columns going down, sitting on footings, holding up that raised deck area. And then you can see that stair coming down, kind of landing down. The base of the stair is essentially level with the level of the basement. Uh, looking at the, you know, the various pieces in terms of required setbacks and other things, again, nothing, nothing is intensified what is already, you know, beyond what is already there. There were some questions as it went in at the lower right corner in regards to repairing area or repairing buffer. And then also anything having to do with flood hazard area. So the applicant did go to, and we got in touch with Environmental Technologies, who we often work with in the area, and Dave Krueger, who prepared a report commenting on and giving some information on both of those things to provide some, you know, additional detail.
What was the purpose again of the proposed walkway, Twenty Seven?
The proposed walkway.
Is proposed on the rear right corner of the house down at that lower basement level as the ground slopes down. And what that does is, you know, currently there's, there's other points here and ways to access their door on the back. There's the existing garage door, but none of those things work well in terms of coming to the house and being able to come into the house with groceries and enter into the house and then get up to the main level. So what's being proposed is a new door on the side here. So the car can stop in the driveway, unload, come into the house, and then walk directly up the existing stairs that go into the kitchen area up at the first floor.
Okay, so it's a walkway to get from the driveway to the...
Correct. Right now, there's a planting bed that runs along the side of the house here, and then there's the driveway. So in essence, it's just taking a chunk of that planting bed, three or four feet, turning that into a paver. So someone can stop the car, take things from the car, and then walk into a door on the side of the house instead of having to come all the way around to the rear. And then also coming over to this side is extremely difficult in terms of getting back to the existing stair that's there. So this would allow entrance into the basement and then directly up the stair into the kitchen.
Okay, because the driveway doesn't abut the house, there's that, so you need to...
Correct, there's like a planting bed strip along the side of the house, which you can see in some of those side photos.
So that door on the side of the house, that doesn't exist right now?
That is correct, that door is a new door. Gotcha.
How big is the asphalt area remaining behind the house? How deep is that, or the depth?
Uh, I don't have an exact, but I can...
How deep is it and how wide is it?
You know, looking at it, it's about a little over an inch and a half in terms of depth at this scale. So it's approximately, let's say a little more than thirty feet deep coming off the back of the house.
And the width of it across the side of the building?
The entire width of it is just a hair less than the fifty-foot width of the property. So we're probably talking, well, eight feet less, so probably somewhere in the ballpark of about forty-two feet wide.
And that's, the purpose of that is to be able to park cars behind the house?
Correct, yes, that, currently that's where cars park and also turn around. So they're able to then, you know, pull out front ways instead of backing out into the street.
If you cut that back a little bit, is it...
Yeah, I mean, there's, I, we'll get to that.
Can you still turn around?
I was concerned about how it got to that high in the first place, why there was all that blackout. They tell me that, now I find out since it predates the zoning.
Right.
He's permitted to have over thirty-three or so square feet of that because it predates him. It's a lot of blackout. He doesn't need all that turn around. I don't know what function it serves for them, but...
Would you consider taking some of that asphalt up to either shorten it or make it less deep such that you're not covering this very large percentage of your property? I know you're taking the small brick patio up. Would you consider taking any more up of that asphalt area?
Uh, it wasn't something that was discussed with the patio area in the back being removed. Some of that usage of outdoor, you know, paved space or patio space was then kind of becoming part of the function of that paved area.
Is the asphalt in good shape? Is it in good condition?
Yes, sir.
It is?
It is.
And you utilize it on a regular basis?
We do, currently.
I was, because I, when I looked at it, I wondered if you couldn't eliminate at the borders edge to some on the left side as you're looking at the back of the property.
Yeah.
You have a lot of them right. I didn't know if there are opportunities to do that.
I, I think it would still allow to park some cars back there, but it does look like a very big space back there.
Yeah, it is, I mean, it is a large space. Standing in that area with cars present, it doesn't appear quite as large. The other aspect of that is exiting from the basement area, the space that's adjacent to the side here is the kind of usable outdoor, let's call it patio area outside of the back, which allows for kind of elimination of what's all the way in the back there. So it's, it's not something that had been discussed prior.
So hadn't been contemplated, and I'm sorry if I'm speaking out of turn, but like, in the...
Can I just ask you to come up to the microphone just so that we can catch what you're saying?
Yes, of course. In, you can park two cars around back. In practice, we do not do that. We will park one car around back and leave another car at the top of the driveway.
And what do you use the asphalt space for?
Parking.
Just parking?
Yes.
One car?
Correct.
You also need to turn around.
Yes.
Otherwise you back out.
Yeah, no, I get, and we're all thoroughly turned around.
Yeah, so, yes, we do need a little bit of space to back the car around to turn it...
It's the stuff on the far left side of the property, I think, that, in this area here, I was just wondering how you, how much utility you get from that in good condition if you needed the hard steering.
Again, we have not contemplated any changes to that, but we're open to whatever the board thinks is appropriate.
Can I ask a question? How much square footage would you be over with this application? Is it just the twenty-seven square feet attributable to the walkway?
It's a little bit more, I think.
Where's the additional coverage coming from?
Yeah, it's twenty-seven feet for the walkway and six feet for the air conditioning. Is that right?
Correct.
Putting an air conditioning unit?
Correct. So that would be thirty-three total over what you're permitted. So could you trim back thirty-three square feet of that driveway? Is that possible, or somewhere closer? We'd eliminate the need for the variance.
I mean, you could potentially, it's, if the width of that area is forty-some odd, a hair over forty feet wide, and you were to...
Pull it back a foot.
It would, yes, that's thirty-three square feet is not a lot of, yes.
It's not a lot.
No.
That's our point, like, we, we want it still to be usable and you can park a car there, but I think we could eliminate the need to talk about that variance quickly, uniquely to do that.
Yeah, I mean, if we can, remember taking a foot away off the back end, you would take away...
Yes, that is, no harm, no foul, I don't think.
That would be a condition. And then that eliminates the need for the coverage variance, so you guys are good and then you're down at three.
Okay, so we're in variance, we're at stipulation. They're no longer asking for that variance, so we don't need to stipulate what they do with it because they're not asking for it.
Fair enough, yeah.
Okay?
It doesn't need a condition, but I mean, that's the understanding.
Then we got, just worked out a variance and a stipulation.
Right.
We'll show a one foot removal and that will...
Yes.
Okay, so just so you understand, you can't go over what is legally permitted on the property right now.
Yeah, which is thirty-seven point seven five.
So you could elect to eliminate it from somewhere else if you wanted to, in the driveway, as long as you're not above that threshold.
Understood.
That make sense?
Yes, it does.
If you go over that, you have to come back. That would be not good.
Understood.
All right. All right, so we took out that one.
Can I also ask a question? The covered porch, because it's already over the asphalt, is not added into our...
Yeah, we don't double it.
Yep.
I think that piece from the house to the left of the stair, like just to the end of the stair would do it for you. I think, really, are you going to pull back in your angles?
Well, it's up to you, what you got there.
Yes.
Your choice.
All right, let's keep going.
Okay.
Uh, then the remaining aspects being the, you know, the majority is the required setbacks. And we're, you know, maintaining, what's being proposed is not increasing any of those encroachments any further into the side or the front doors.
Got it.
Uh, so yeah, I mean, looking, you know, looking at your different comments in the, you know, there was a letter from the Environmental Commission. A number of those didn't specifically apply to what our project was. They talked about tree removal, they talked about stormwater, you know, retention and everything else.
Are you talking about the Environmental Commission of this?
Yes. And those, what we're proposing is under the threshold of the thousand square feet or twenty-five hundred square feet of any soil disturbance. And we're not proposing to remove any trees. So, so not really too much to address, you know, from the comments of that side.
They did ask me to do, implement stormwater best management practices during site work and as part of final grading restoration and to implement best management practices to preserve and protect trees. Very exciting, because that's something you guys would be ready to do?
Yes, yeah, they would protect.
So the Environmental Commission memo stipulated to the extent, look at it.
Yeah, so there, to some small degree it would, you know, in terms of keeping, you know, construction vehicles away from any, you know, tree root systems or anything else. But, but, you know, beyond that, there's not too much impact in terms of the work that's being done.
And Mr. Schley, is this house in both township boroughs?
Yeah, the back corner where the shed is, it's in Burnsville.
Okay. Do we have to apply on that then?
Well, you can apply on it, I don't know.
It doesn't mean it, no one's going to listen to me. Same thing at home, okay.
Yeah, I think one thing we can do is, one of my comments talks about not, the coverage, they can't add coverage in Burnsville that would raise the coverage above what it is now as a total in the applicant.
To me?
Yep.
Thank you. God, that makes sense. Oh, God, okay.
So no trees being removed, any exterior lighting?
Uh, nothing specifically proposed, but on that outdoor covered deck area, there would likely be some form of downlighting, you know, to provide that. But nothing on the face of the structure that's projecting outward.
Nothing that's going to cast noxious light spillage to a neighborhood property? Dave, I'm still in your thunder here, but I'll just keep rolling. So you mentioned the repairing zone, wetlands in the back or something like that. There's a condition in Mr. Schley's memo about containing that with an easement, heated to the township?
Yeah, and there was, so there was some question with that originally. There was a quest for the homeowner, based on town supplied information, to kind of roughly mark out where potentially that repairing zone line would come across. And that was based upon, I believe, a hundred-foot repairing buffer, hundred-and-fifty? And then subsequently, in the letter from Dave Krueger at Environmental Technology, down in item number two, down at the bottom of the letter, it says, based on what he viewed there, accordingly, a fifty-foot repairing zone would be required adjacent to this water course. Since the water course is approximately one hundred feet from the south-southeast corner of the site, no repairing zone extends onto the site.
Were we given a copy of that letter?
Yeah, we didn't.
Yes.
Yeah, no, we don't have that.
We don't have that.
Okay, let's mark that as an exhibit.
But given the condition of that letter, that would be fine.
Okay.
The one-fifty is most conservative for a restriction purposes. If the expert says it's only fifty and Krueger's certainly an expert, then there would be no need for it.
So do you want to mark this as an exhibit?
Yeah.
What, what should I mark this?
Exhibit A one.
A one.
Let me just take a look at it so you...
Yeah, do you have another copy of that letter, that we can keep that?
You can keep this.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just a copy of what we have.
Thank you, sir. This is exhibit A one, it's a letter from Environmental Technology Incorporated dated August twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five, as detailed by Mr. Ensign. Does anyone want to take a look at this? No? Do you want to have a look at it? I said, I said it's out of here. And then, last condition for Mr. Schley, I saw in his memo, you comply with the township's flood damage prevention ordinance? Is that still applicable?
Yeah, the town mapping shows that the flood zone comes on the property. I don't know to what extent that the, I think the only fill in that area would be the post for the deck.
Correct.
So I don't, I don't know what implications are of that, but you don't have to deal with the attached engineer's office on that.
Okay, that's all the conditions.
Yeah, do we, is that everything from your memo, Mr. Schley?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Coin, is there anything outstanding on yours?
No, item two, since the survey was so old, relatively old, and we're talking about previous cover limits, I just wanted to make sure that the applicant states that this survey, that this is on the property now existing was taken on the survey in twenty-fourteen. We talked about whether it requires, they were we lost the next payment from our report. The only thing would be that if you see typical, if you see twenty-five hundred square feet disturbance, you'll have to provide some photography and SCS measures for the town. You may not get there, but if you do, just be aware that will be an additional criteria you'll have to
Yeah, we should be, based on even removal of that patio, we should still be well under at twenty-five hundred square feet.
Beware of that, so, because then if you submit the township, the township, although you may need additional total over or whatnot.
Right.
Just make sure that twenty-five hundred square feet is what you're looking for from the township. And lastly, it's just that, since we're dealing with the impervious cover limit, just stay there. Just don't, you know, find some extra blacktop or some extra impervious cover you want to place around. Stay where you are.
And can you clarify, was it thirty-three feet, thirty-three square feet, or thirty-three percent?
Thirty-three square feet.
Thirty-three square feet.
Thirty-three square feet, they are no longer asking for a lot coverage variance.
I wrote down thirty-three percent, thirty-three.
Square.
I'm not really sure why I said that.
But we don't even need to worry about it now, because they've withdrawn that request.
Okay.
So what they do with it.
That was in the thirty-eight-two and then thirty-seven, so five, I think.
So now they're grandfathered and now, okay, great. Anything else for us?
Uh, just in closing, that, you know, looking at the proposed work, we're essentially with what's being shown here, and what we're dealing with, with the pre-existing non-conforming size and shape of the property, that looking for a C1 variance, and that with the hardships and the other elements that we have here, and then the proposed work, that the benefits of what's being shown here, especially with maintaining the character of the existing house, far outweigh any detriment. And, you know, looking at it with the removal of the impervious coverage, I don't see any detrimental aspects based on what's being proposed here.
Thank you. Are there any questions, based upon any of the testimony that we've heard from the public? Are there any comments for or against this application? Seeing one. There it is.
Sir, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Name an address, please.
Todd Elstein, 172 Riverside Drive. Just a comment, it was, it seems it was missed on the Environmental Commission paper. When you do the construction, I want you to be mindful, since the house was built in 1938, be mindful for any underground tanks, and for asbestos, and for any other hazardous material. And if you have any architectural structures that could be saved, if you could, you know, maybe donate it to somebody. We try to, you know, donate, you know, not have so much stuff go into the dumps, so if we could, you know, any of that stuff could be saved and sent to somebody who likes it.
And recycled, yeah.
And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elstein. Any other comments on this application? Okay, seeing none. Do you have anything else for us, or you want to turn it over to the board at this time? None. Okay. Chris, do you want to sum us up here, because we've had some changes for the requests?
Just to Mr. Elstein's point, I don't see those comments typically others.
Yeah, he was saying that it was missed, so he wanted to highlight that.
Well, probably the best to just anyway, would you comply with the standard condition that you see usually puts on a lot of applications? First would be, take any proper precautions of, like, painting asbestos or underground tanks, or you guys are good, so it's your interest. And then, would you also make a good faith best effort to recycle, repurpose, or give any demolishment material? If it's not being reused?
Yes.
Thank you.
On some of that asphalt.
Thank you.
Okay, gotta get that taken care of, okay. So let me summarize here, three variances being sought down from four, I'll just note that for the record. They eliminated that lot coverage variance. So the three they are seeking is for the principal dwelling front yard setback. Thirty-two point one feet proposed, where fifty feet is the minimum required. I'll note that the existing front yard setback here is twenty-five feet already, so this is not as intense as the existing non-conformity. Next is for the easterly side yard setback, five point seven feet proposed, where fifteen feet is the required minimum. Three point seven is the existing addition, again, not as bad as what's there. And then the combined side yard setback, twenty-two point nine proposed by the addition, where forty feet is the required minimum, existing addition is twenty point two feet. As far as conditions go, everything in Mr. Sly's memo, Mr. Quinn's memo, and Environmental Commission memo, dated respectively August 14th, August 28th, and August 25th, to the extent applicable. I know we knocked out a bunch of them, are no longer applicable to the lot coverage variance being eliminated. And then one thing I really, two other things I picked up during the hearing. Dormers would add an exterior appearance that is architecturally consistent with the balance of the dwelling. As per the testimony of Mr. Ensign, our architect, Environmental Commission, additional comments that I just have to take proper precautions if any hazards are discovered, and then making a good faith best effort to recycle, repurpose, or give demolishment material. So that's it.
Thank you. Okay, does anyone want to make any comments or make a motion on this application?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
If anybody has any comments. So I see this as a C1 hardship. The shape of the property obviously doesn't give you much room to work with. The houses already, the conditions already exist. I don't see you adding any negative impact to the property, to the surrounding properties, to the town. So I would see it as a C1 hardship. If I were to say C2, I would simply say that I don't see any detriment to the public good. So I would deem the application complete. I would ask our board attorney to draft a resolution memorializing our decision to approve the application, and with all of the stipulations therewith.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. I would also add, I appreciate the effort to comply and your respect for our town audiences here. You know, the lot coverage is kind of near and dear to our hearts, so any effort made to comply, we really appreciate, we appreciate that.
Is that a second?
I'll second that, yeah, I don't get to second too often, I'll second that. So Ms. Bowman and Janiers. Ms. Herrera?
Yes.
Mr. Deitchy?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Bowman?
Yes.
Ms. Puckett?
Yes.
Ms. Silver?
Yes.
Chairman Janier?
Yes. Good luck with your project.
Thank you so much.
Next on the agenda is Chatteraj, hopefully I pronounced that correctly, which is ZB 25018.
Before we swear everybody in, I'll just note for the record that I did review the applicant's notice of tonight's hearing. I do find that they had all the correct requisite content in there, it was timely served. It was published in the Burnsville News on August 14, 2025, and sent by certified male owners of property event two hundred feet of the subject property on August 12. So the board has the jurisdiction here to decide the case, in my legal opinion. With that, let's see if anybody else here, so assuming it's just the two of you testifying.
Anu Chaturaj.
Raise your hands, as well as our two both professionals in this jury line. Okay, so all four of you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
So, sir, ma'am, give us your names and addresses to the record, please.
Yeah, so I'm Anu Chaturaj, my husband Ian Chaturaj. We live in the property six Wotton Way, Baskin Ridge, Lot 54, Block 5402, Lot 8. We have been living here since February 2013, about twelve and a half years, and we raised two children, we're in college right now. So we are, should I go ahead with the proposal? Yeah, so we are proposing, we did a major construction in 2016, for which the board has approved our construction and permits. So we did the construction as per the compliance. At this time, we are requesting a construction of an open deck for a 551 square feet, which will extend on the back side of the property. Now, our property is located in the corner of Lyons and Wotton Way, which is actually two front roads, so that's why we have two front here. So we don't have technically a back here, we have side yards. And because of that, the side yard setback is required at seventy-five square feet. But last construction, 2016, we were approved for a setback of twenty-four square feet, twenty-four feet. Not square feet, twenty-four feet. So now this time, with the new construction of the open deck, we were proposing to extend the deck nine feet behind the kitchen. So behind the kitchen, which require, which will have only fifteen feet setback. So that's one variance we're requesting. And the second variance is that we were not, based on the memo, like, I just realized that we are currently over sixteen percent coverage, where we were, when we did the construction, we said that we would have a fourteen point seven eight coverage in 2016. And then currently, we just came to know, which was, we were on over, that the gravels are actually considered in the coverage.
Which gravel?
The gravels, which
Pebbles in the, in the backside. The road, I mean, the pathway that is going to the pool. So on both the sides, we do have the pebbles up in there.
Yeah, so it's a walkway.
Yeah.
It's side of the walkway. So that's why it counts, so that's why we have a sixteen percent coverage. With these proposals, we, we, we can remove the shed, which is in the back side of the, it's in the picture. The shed, we'll remove the shed, and we'll remove the gravels or the pebbles, which is around those pathways, which going from house to the pool. So after removing those gravels and the sheds, we're going to bring the coverage down to fifteen point one three percent. So that's another variance we're requesting to go over fifteen percent, which is the approved lot size, but we would have to go on fifteen point one three percent.
Okay, so you're at sixteen point zero seven. We're allowed for fifteen, and your proposal is fifteen point one three.
Yes.
Only changes, okay.
And I think with the memo, there was few questions. The second question, I hope I answered, that why we are over the approved coverage, which was sixteen point one eight, which were not over of the gravels. Second was, there is a proposal that we should do more plants and shrubs, right?
Yeah, you're talking about Mr. Sly's memo, right, did you receive that?
Yeah, yeah.
So I think his point number four. The applicant should discuss the adequacy of existing proposed screening between the proposed deck and the residence on adjoining Lot 9.
Correct, we do plan for more trees, right?
Yeah, no, Lot 9 is in the back side, the deck will be extended from towards Lot 9. So, because we have, we want some privacy on the deck, so we do have planned to put plants around the decks because of our own privacy also, so we do have planned for that.
Okay, so your plan, your plans would be to put in some screening? And where would that screening go? Describe that again for me.
I'm sorry.
You mean the plants, right, not
Yeah.
Yeah, the plants would go, so after, between Lot 9 and Lot 8, which is
Would they be by the pool, or by the patio, I'm trying to
By the patio.
Okay, so
Yeah.
Actually, I don't have a
Do you have any pictures where you'd be able to help us?
Yeah, I don't have, I didn't bring those pictures, I know I've, yeah, can you, yeah, if you
Who took these photographs?
Yeah, if you see the
Now, who took them?
I, I did, I did.
When did you take them?
This I took on August 5th, August 12th or 13th, whenever I saw them.
Okay, a couple of weeks ago?
Yeah, yeah.
And they accurately depict the house?
Yeah, they are, only there is one picture, which is AI-generated, which is showing the, how the deck would look like.
Ah, I see, thank you for telling, AI-generated.
It says AI-generated. I need them back, though.
Yeah.
So yeah, we don't have the picture here on the, our back, back of the lot. But we do have planned, like, the, yeah.
So this is the one, we, if we're gonna extend this one, the scientific degree of this fence, would like to put the plants in the tree. They are actually free.
Yeah, so this is the, yeah, we're going to put it behind the deck.
Do you mind showing me on here?
So Lot, this is Lot 9, so it's here.
Okay.
Here, they can move here, so we're going to put the plants here.
Okay, so you're pointing to
Between eight and
Yeah, but at the house level.
Yeah.
Okay. And Mr. Sly, was your comment specific to any particular location of concern?
Well, I was thinking more directly where the deck is.
Yeah.
Is that where we're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, there's that thirty-nine foot side
Yes.
of the deck, and they'd be between that and the property line.
Correct.
Right, right, yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
So you would stipulate to doing some native screening type
Yes.
plantings?
Yes.
Sure, it would look something nicely.
But you're also, you're saying plants, but you're, we're talking about like large shrubs or trees that are actually going to create almost like a barrier.
I do have these wild longrass.
No, six feet.
Yeah, we already planted those, they're growing now, so we do plan to plant more.
Okay.
Something that would
Yeah, so this comes out like this, and it becomes a big bush.
Exactly.
For privacy.
Privacy, exactly.
So that nobody on that, on Lot 9 can look at you on your deck.
Exactly.
And vice versa.
Yes, yes.
Looking to their property while you're standing on your deck.
Absolutely.
Yes, that's the plan.
We know what Mr. Sly, do you know what point one three represents in square feet on this application?
Uh, yes, it's fifty-two and a half square feet.
Fifty-two and a half square feet. And do we have the number of the gravel walkway that goes to the pool? It looks fairly narrow.
Yeah, those
Oh, this is the gravel. So the slate is staying?
Yeah, the slate is staying, it's very narrow, and those, but those gravel with red colors, those are, will be removed.
Okay, so the slate is staying.
Never, you're removing all of this, and this, and this, and this, do you want to know?
No, just removing
Just these squares that you
Yeah, just those squares.
And this is staying here?
So this
This looks like a little gravel area from the back of your fence.
This is actually, we have plants here, and then
Oh, plants, yeah.
There's a plant, I have got some pictures.
Some of that stone is just decorative stone, foundation, planting, ground cover. Yeah, it's the stone on either side that essentially creates a patio directly.
And there was another question about the cinder blocks, so I also bought some
Do we have that photo?
No, we don't, because this question was raised on 25th. Sorry.
I was just gonna say, if you want to show us the photographs, we gotta take them.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So, yeah, those are, there was a question on 25th about the cinder blocks. I wanted to show the cinder blocks and not, you know, only for plants. So I have the vegetable garden here.
Okay.
So I just have the cinder blocks
Those were the pandemic ideas.
For gardening.
I got you, okay, so hold on.
Does that count, cinder blocks?
No, that's a planter perimeter, that's like, they've been creating a planter area, so that's not walls.
I think they will be considered as individual stones placed on the ground. Only not stones.
Ms. Puckett has got us all.
I don't think blocks should count, because they have pools in them.
Well, we're not counting them.
That's why I don't think my wall counts, because they have holes in them.
Oh, your wall counts.
It does, my whole is cinder blocks, basically, they're stacked. Okay, so real quick, just so everyone knows for the record, the applicant handed me a compendium of ten colorized photographs of planted beds in the property. We will date them today, September 3rd, 2025.
Sure.
And you took these photos?
Yes, I did.
And that's exhibit A1, if I didn't say.
Now, you asked what point one three percent represents, but they're asking for sixteen point oh seven. Um, no, you asked what point one three percent represents, but they're asking for sixteen point oh seven.
No, they're asking for fifteen.
Fifteen point.
Shed, and then big boy stone there.
Can I ask one question? In the previous approval in twenty sixteen, you removed two sheds?
Yeah.
And now you're, you put a shed back, and now you're removing the shed again?
Yes.
Did you put that shed there, like, was that even supposed to be put there, guys? No, so.
I can explain that, so, yeah.
Know that you're not supposed to put a shed, and then you put a shed, and now you're removing it again, and you're ensuring you won't put a shed on there again, after you removed a shed twice now.
This all happened during the pandemic, the kids were at home, and there were a lot of pool toys that they bought. So they bought that little shed, which is less than like, uh, eighty-five square feet.
And it's forty-seven square feet.
And we, they just assembled it and put it over there.
They meaning you?
They meaning my son and my daughter. Now they're left for the college, we don't need those anymore anyways, so we are going to get rid of that.
The shed has all junk, like, it's a.
Is it like a plastic shed or something?
Yeah, it's a plastic shed, yeah.
Yeah, it's very small, forty-seven square feet, it's like a small house kind of thing, yeah.
Just to store the pool toys and, and.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
No, no, absolutely.
The shed is like a, it's not a permanent shed, it's just a, like a plastic over.
I understand, yeah, I understand. Okay, thank you. We don't have a picture of the shed, I can't see it.
And the stone area, I just want to make sure, the stone area that you are removing are these on the inside?
Yes, exactly, they're all, already there are grasses, so this is the, this is, this is, we, we already have grass, but there are stones below.
Right, so you, so you're removing this, and you're removing this, and this is staying?
Yeah.
What is, what is the black line there?
Oh, this is just like, you know.
Is it like fabric paper?
Yeah, it's a piece, it's like, like, so.
Oh, that's why they put that, uh, little, you know, they usually put all the grass in there.
Yeah, yep.
Is there something underneath, or is it just the, just the, like, a little?
Plastic.
Separated, like, I didn't.
And Mr. Sly, I'm afraid to ask this question, but Mr. Sly, like, this stone area on either side of the walkway.
A lot of walk around there.
I'm sorry.
Doesn't look like impervious, ever this.
So this stone area, which has grass growing all through it, is impervious, come?
Well, it's, when it's, uh, a big, a hard area like that, it's basically a patio.
Okay.
Because it's not serving as a, as a mulch or foundation plantings, you know, you, the other real thin areas that are maybe around the air conditioner unit, or used as mulch. Um, i- it's, what else is it, if it's not a patio? It's between the walkway and the stones on either side, what purpose do those stones serve?
Yeah.
It could use a drainage.
Just for the beautification purposes.
Well, there are other stones on the property that are, that are near the pool, whi- which serve a drainage purpose.
Yeah, that's.
And we didn't ask that question yet, but as a comparison of what the use of it is.
Right.
It's, um, you have to call it something, and when it's a big wide area like that, we call it a patio.
Okay.
But if water's going through it, is it technically impervious?
It's growing.
Well, i- it's not as impervious as pavement or concrete, but it, the definition of impervious is, is it, it prohibits or, or, or prevents the infiltration of water.
Okay. It's relatively.
As compared to a, a, a natural grass surface.
Okay.
I just think it's a question of what it could be, it could aspire to be a patio.
Actually, something I just learned from my civil engineering, is, um, that the, the DEP now considers, um, any area that has vehicular traffic, whether it is aid or gravel to be impervious.
Yes, that's renewed.
Now, they didn't used to do that, this is brand, but.
No, I think, we have.
Our ordinance is always similar to the DEP.
I'm calling, I'm calling another state.
Oh, yeah, okay. We're ahead of our time.
But they, they did not use it, but they don't consider walkways impervious.
Right.
We do, right, anything that gets compacted.
Walkways and patios and driveways regardless of the surface.
Okay, sorry, we went on a tangent. Okay. Okay, um, so let's finish going through Mr. Sly's memo here.
Any, uh, lighting features?
I haven't thought any.
On the, on the deck or?
Yeah, anyway, proposed.
And I mean that, because we are kind of on the fro, on the, on the street, so light might reduce the privacy, but, yeah.
They're gonna be, they're gonna be.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That would be a condition of approval.
Yeah.
Any trees being removed?
No.
No tree removal, okay, we can scrap that. Uh, Mr. Sly asked that you revise the plans to show the existing stone gravel area located to the, uh, rear and west of the swimming pool.
Yeah, Dan, there's a picture of that, and I, I did mention that what happened was the, when the swimming pool, we, we, we backslash the water, lot of, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, he's just asking you to show up the plants.
Show, show that. Y- y- you mean put more plants on there?
No, on, on the plant.
Or showing the plant?
Show it on the plants.
Um.
The plan that you drew with patio, and I'd just add that to it, because it's not shown there, and, and label it as to what it is, so it, it explains why it's not counted as coverage.
Okay.
So that when the inspector goes out, after you do your deck, and is looking to see that the areas of your, your stones have been removed, and the shed is removed.
Okay.
And they see this other stone area in the back and have questions.
Okay, got it, got it, okay.
So we have, yeah, add that one in the plan.
Yeah, exactly. And then the last, last, for Mr. Sly's memo, um, the deck's gonna remain open, you're not gonna cover it?
Oh, no, it's an open.
That would be a condition, it's gotta remain.
Yes, it's open, yes.
Okay, um, Mr. Quinn would still your thunder as well. In Mr. Quinn's memo, this would just be included in any resolution, he just wants you to be aware that if you go over the coverage, that you're gonna, that you may be approved for tonight, you gotta come back.
Oh, yes.
You gotta stay within that threshold. Um, if our permission memo hit them real quick, they want you to implement best management practices, uh, for stormwater during the site work. And then, uh, implement best management practices to preserve and protect trees during the work. Okay, does it do that?
Yes, yeah.
See what else, they asked you to install, uh, site features to promote recharge from roof leaders, I don't know, Tom, do you think that's really necessary here?
I don't see necessary, plus if they have that gravel area to catch, capture water where the pool is, that's kind of an infiltration area now, so.
Okay, just grab that, guys, we'll be planting some shrubs and trees already, so that's another comment they had.
Mm-hmm.
Not sure why they included this one, but they wanted you to be aware of the potential for any in-ground tanks, lead paint, asbestos, taking precautions as necessary.
Maybe to the middle of the lawn.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah.
And then, uh, also, I don't think you're really.
Demolition also, I saw another coming.
And if possible, I don't know, this is even really applicable here, but if you have any material that's gonna be demolished, they want you to recycle, repurpose or get.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
You guys agree with that, okay. So what I'm hearing is that you're gonna comply with all the comments in Mr. Sly's memo, Mr. Quinn's memo, and the environment's permission memo, to the extent.
Yes.
It applies, okay. That's it, as far as conditions go.
Are there any other questions from the board, these applicants? Are there any questions from the public? No? Are there any comments from the public on this application? No? Do you have anything else from us, or do you want to leave it with us now, the applications?
Leave it with you then.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, all right. Chris, do you want to, uh, take a stab at this one for us?
Absolutely, I'll do my best. It's a tough one, a lot of variances.
Your best is gonna know.
Okay, so the applicants are, they requesting two variances here. One for the, uh, rear yard setback of the, uh, dwelling, which would be fifteen feet, uh, vis a vis the proposed deck. Seventy-five feet is the required minimum, next is the lot coverage ratio. Uh, big overage here, they're asking for fifteen point one three percent, or fifteen percent is permitted. And then, as far as conditions go, everything in the memos, to the extent applicable, as I just stated on the record a couple minutes ago. And then, um, the applicants would provide some native trees, plant, native planting, I'm getting, native plant screening between the proposed deck and the adjacent property lot nine. I think that's to the west, ultimately subject to review and approval of Mr. Sly and board planner. And I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, does anyone want to make any comments or make a motion on this application?
Um, anyone?
Got all of those.
Uh, so, so I'll, I'll jump in.
Thank you.
Um, first of all, um, thank you for being mindful of the impervious coverage and, uh, the willingness to remove the stone and the shed. Um, I, I don't see this as a hardship, um, because I believe that, you know, the, the shape of the property is, is what it is. Um, what I would see is this is under C2. Um, I don't see, I, I see it as, in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, I see it as, um, there's no detriment to the public good. Um, as long as you're screening between your neighbors, so you can't see and they can't see, it's, it's harmless. So I would, um, unless anybody else has any comments, I would make a motion to deem this application complete. Um, I would, uh, ask the board attorney to draft a, a resolution memorializing the board's decision to approve the application. Um, under a C2, uh, variance, um, or C2 relate, variance relief, and, um, with all of the stipulations there too.
I will second that. Thank you. Ms. Bowman and Ms. Pachter.
Ms. Herrera?
Yes.
Ms. Pedici?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Bowman?
Yes.
Ms. Pachter?
Yes.
Ms. Silver?
Yes.
Chairman Janier?
Yes, thank you, good luck on your project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Great, um, next on the agenda is our two thousand and twenty-four zoning board of adjustment, I, I believe we discussed that at the last meeting, and Mr. Sly was kind enough to draft some language, highlighting, um, some of our thoughts with respect to impervious coverage calculations and swimming pools. Um, I did read through it, thank you Dave, I, I think that it did a great job of capturing kind of what we were thinking, and just put it, just serves to put it in front of the, of the committee, and be free to do whatever they want to. Any other comments on that change? Do we need to vote on that, or discuss it anymore?
There's a resolution to adopt.
Oh.
If you're okay with the, um, the drafted recommendations, uh, and the rest of the report that.
Yes, that we reviewed, I think last time.
Put that together and, uh, send it to the, the township committee and, and the planning board, uh, with your signature on it.
Great.
Um, and there is a resolution that was distributed to adopt, um, adopting the annual report.
Okay, so can we vote on that now?
Motion to adopt with the, uh, addenda from Mr. Sly, the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Yes, okay, so can we have a motion, um?
Oh, and memorialize the resolution as well, if you're willing.
So move?
Yes.
I'll do the short one.
Outstanding, Mr. Crowe. And is there a second?
I'll second. One, I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Herrera?
Yes.
Ms. Pedici?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Bowman?
Yes.
Ms. Pachter?
Yes.
Ms. Silver?
Yes.
Chairman Janier?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I think we are canceling our, our special meeting, our second meeting in September, um, so we can go ahead and do that. I noticed that we don't have any applications in front of us for, um, the October meeting, and that is because none of them are ready, is that correct, Ms. Lehman?
That's correct.
Okay, so you'll reach out to us when they're ready, and we'll figure out whether we pick them up or you send them to us?
Yes.
Okay. Um, any other comments from members?
I do have one comment.
Okay.
Just they said what we heard tonight, in particular, with these very undersized properties. I, I really think we have to consider, um, making a recommendation to have some kind of a sliding scale for lot coverage for these smaller prop, and setbacks. Because, because what you're doing is you're asking the people in town who have the smallest properties and generally less resources to come before zoning every time. Coming before zoning, I'll tell you, it's expensive.
Yeah, no, I.
I, I just don't, I, I think there needs to be somebody who has a sliding scale considered.
So can we, we can table that for, because this, the, the one that we just adopted was for two thousand and twenty-four, so we can talk about that at the end of this year, to consider whether we want to say anything about extremely undersized lots.
We see so many of these, and, you know, and there are a lot of these in town. And I, I feel like a lot of the zoning ordinances were changed in, and I'm, I don't know if this is true, but in reaction to the development in the hills, um, because of the high density housing that was permitted up there.
We do see a number that have like a building envelope of zero.
Right, and, you know. Okay, but when you get into, like, the downtown area of Baskin, and it's smaller neighborhoods, you, you, you see this over and over again, and I don't know if it's fair, because those people are penalized because of rules that were set up for larger pieces of property.
And because of their lot size, they can't do anything.
All the rules were set up for larger pieces of property.
I agree with you.
And they don't have to be able to move on access, and, you know, yes. Yes, it's, it's.
Okay.
You'll go lots in the property.
That's a good point, um, we can table that for, you know, whether we want to include that in our two thousand and twenty-five report, okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Pachter. Any comments from staff? Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Great.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
That's a really good point.